Registration fees fifty bucks. It's in the resolution. Trying to remember that that would be a DNR thing, but for us, no, I don't I don't think unless DNR requires that they be licensed. Um, then that's. Like that will follow whatever DNR stipulates.
Um, and then for the group of the hunter safety course completion is applicable. Would they both need to have that or just a sixteen year old?
Um, the sixteen year old um would have to have one, and if there's an adult that is licensed, we would infer students to have one too. I think anybody born after nineteen sixty, you know, something has to have a hunter safety course.
For eligibility, but for the property itself. I don't have three acres, say I am a hunter and. Adam has three acres, am I able to hunt on Adam's three acres?
Correct, yeah, correct, at the property would have to be registered. You could hunt on Adams as long as you have your tag. Um, Adam would then be uh responsible, not obviously if he had. Uh, we're gonna limit on certain parcels, we'll say, hey, you probably have three hunters. That can alternate hunt, or you got, yeah, you got one place that's safe. There could be one hundred here, now if you have five people registered, you know, one hunts each day of the week. And that'll allow more than just one or two deer to come off that property that somebody pointed out before. So if you had, you know, ten acres out uh by Dundee Bay, and you you know, you want, you have friends or family. Come in and they can take it, but we also had, and nobody brought it up, we do have the right at any point in time to cancel the season. So if we suddenly have, you know, the people are talking four hundred hunters, I I don't, I don't think we'll ever see four hundred hunters. Um, you know, our goal is if we can get the deer population down uh between somewhere between fifty and a hundred here, I think would be great. Um, and if we do more than that, I I think I'd be excited. Um, but I don't think we're gonna try to put you, you know, we wanna have, we we all like to see the deer. We think, you know, we're just trying to get it down to a manageable level.
Um, I know. That uh. Hunting and animals and different things are one of your passions, but is there somewhere else that you? You have guys, some of this knowledge, I guess.
Um, we pulled ordinances uh from Michigan. Um, Wisconsin, Iowa, Ohio, I read most of those and looked at them. Uh, people talk about, yeah, there's, uh, I think maybe with Mr. Friday. Uh, was talking about, yeah, places have tried to actually shoot the deer with darts um to put birth control in them. Uh, but you have to do that every year, you you had other ones that tried to relocate the deer, do not respond well being trapped. And transported, um, the mortality rate is fairly high on that. Um, so yeah, and it's very expensive, and then other communities hire sharpshooters to come in. And shoot the deer, and a lot of those will range between five and a thousand dollars per deer. Um, so I just didn't seem like. Options for us right now.
It says the harvested deer must be checked with the the police department within forty eight hours. Is the deer meat still gonna be getting? Okay.
Well, they they can come five minutes, they can come, uh, yeah, I mean, if you hang it right and and properly dress it. And it's it's decently cool out, yes, it'll be fine, but they have, they can call and they'll get in hopefully within an hour or two. Um, and get it checked.
Well, the people who hunted deer then take the food for me.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, every, I I would assume everybody's hunt is gonna be hunt for me, and I don't think. Anybody's not, you know, you shoot it, what are you gonna do with it?
Exactly.
Yeah, so yeah, everybody that would be hunting, I would assume would be hunting for me.
I did talk to a lot of people about this and. Their main concern was the safety of it. And about deer being shot and running into say, the example they gave the an old lady's yard. And she, the deer's not dead. And she buys a heart attack or something.
Well, one of the things we did put in here is that if you shoot a deer and happens I get on something else's property. Do the the courtesy thing like you do out in the country, knock in the people's door and say, hey, can I go get the deer? You know, and if they say no, um, we've asked the the police department to say, hey, okay, can you intervene to help us out? Same thing like the game word. So.
So in that situation, what is the police coming in and doing, are they?
They they would obviously try to talk to the person and try to get that, extract that here from the property.
So on that uh heart attack example, who is liable, let's say, if someone does get injured from a street bolt, for example? Is the hunter the?
We don't have any bullets. Bolt, you said bolt? Um, it would be the the hunter themselves would be responsible.
It's um ethical. Knowing where you're shooting, what you're shooting at, and.
I understand, if a tree blind pointing down, it shouldn't be an issue.
And obviously, there should be nobody on people's property or in their woods unless, because we're gonna be telling them. You know, where's your property, okay, this is my property, okay, you put a tree stand in that corner, and you put a tree stand in that corner. And you have to shoot onto your property, it has to be within thirty yards, so. But we've got it situated pretty tight, so they they obviously shouldn't be on somebody else's property too.
Thirty yards, not very far.
Cause then you're up in the air and you're shooting down. If you're shooting out that arrow, oh, the bolt or arrow trap. If you're shooting down, it'll go into the ground. So again, another measure to prevent it from carrying, now, we do have an exception. If somebody's in a wheelchair or something, obviously can't get a tree stand. We'll look at it, you know, can they use a block? And and that'll be special cases, and that'll have to be approved by the chief and myself.
Any other questions? Um, about. People eating the deer and stuff like that, but if there's a hunter that. I wonder if we have a number to a food bank or something.
I I'm sure we could probably make that available, maybe when people come to take the test. They're gonna have to fill out a form, we're gonna give them a certificate, we can always say, hey, if. If you're interested in donating me donating meat to a food bank or whatever, here's, here's a possible, that's a good idea. We've had that, just remind me.
Okay, I didn't even listen to what you said, sorry, I made you so much worse. Is would it make sense to say you have to be so many feet from someone else's property as well?
Well, that's what we'll take care of, instead of allowing it to happen, we're saying, you gotta be here, you can shoot in that direction, you can shoot this direction, you can't shoot in that direction.
We'll approve the location.
Correct, they even have to draw out, we have to have a map of their property, we'll we'll draw it out and say, okay, you can be in this area. So we're actually pinpointing, putting people in the best possible location to do that.
And it might not be the best spot to shoot a deer, but it's not gonna be a safe safe.
And there may even be somebody has three acres that we look at and say, sorry. Uh, we're not gonna let you, we're not gonna let you own your property, because there is no safe way to do so. So we reserve that right to do that too.
Isable, have hunters like, while we're not urgent to mine, say, hey, I'm gonna go out hunting at. One, two, three, A B C Avenue today. And so then, if someone comes in and they were hunting on four, five, six. D E F, they didn't call in, then we know that they're.
I think that would be, that that's where it gets too labor intensive, and I don't think we can manage that.
I think if if this make more sense, we would not approve. Property trade directly next to each other, hence hunting.
We may approve two properties next to each other, but we may have our person on this side.
I just mean like saying, I am approved for this area, I might go and hunt over there instead. Yeah, that's what I mean.
Now, if we approve. Piece of property. I wonder if we can give them a. Like a sheet of paper saying that they were approved, so. You say somebody's, like you said, somebody's hunting this piece of property. But there's no sign out here saying this was approved by the city.
I don't know if I said it to you, Brian, or not. But we have actually applications that they have to fill out, already done, if it passes. Uh, we have some revisions to do it, we also have tags. So the landowner will have a, the the property owner will have a sheet. And on that sheet will have where they signed in, who that they let hunt. And each person who hunts, it says seventy of you are hunters. You all have an identification number that the city has, if you track, or where you're at, you may have permission to hunt different properties. That's fine with us, but we're gonna know, you know, when you come in to tag a deer, we're gonna ask which property did you shoot at, and each property's gonna have an. So we're gonna be able to track this, and we're gonna know how many deer came out of, you know, what property, what area? Of the city, so that we can look at and say, wow, we've taken a ton of deer out of here, but. Nothing's going on over here, we better, we better see what's what's happening. So we'll actually know, we'll be able to tell you how many deer were shot in what areas probably. When the season's over.
Um, or are they required attachments for the property owner application? How are they doing a written safety plan where they are showing the locations of the tree stands?
That would be with us, it would be more than likely what we're gonna do is take a drawing, we'll bring in an overhead photo. And then we'll be able to the outline what areas is safest area, what areas they can't shoot at, what.
Okay, so the attachments then are including after they submit their application?
They 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 will submit us a map, I think they'd ask for a map, and then with that, we'll help them with the safety plan together.
Um, I have another question. And it's section three repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinance to the state. Here with our tier five repeal. How do we know what ordinances will be repealed?
That's a general statement that's in all our ordinances, so anytime you write an ordinance, just in case we staffed and do our research. And somewhere it conflicts, this will take precedence over that. Make sense, sometimes, you know, but if you notice, we caught the one, which you're gonna revisit on firearms. And, you know, no discharge of bow and stuff, so you're actually going to take something, right now, if you pass this, this is actually in conflict with that other. Okay, so you're gonna fix that with the next action if if you proceed with this. So it's kind of a, it's a legal lease that lawyers put in there and say, okay, if if this conflicts with something else, this takes precedence. If they ever find something.
Okay, anything else?
Say you wanna just put the date?
Oh.
And where would you do it?
Yes. Thank you, um, I said it earlier, but I did not say it in terms of this. I need to insert in there from October first to November thirtieth will be the season. I know I mentioned it earlier, but I did not put it in this ordinance. I just said, let's follow what the the state does, but then somebody brought up, we also have seasons for. Uh, some of the tribes in the area have their own seasons. Um, so I I instead I just said, well, I'll set the season to be this to this. Um, so that we we don't have to worry about, you know, somebody starting early, is it, you know, I is they gonna interpret this differently? So for clarification purposes, the season always starts on October first and always ends November thirtieth.
Has the DNR provided their opinion on whether or not we have deer overpopulation problem?
Um, Alex uh sent them this uh through their review. Um, and I think they both said, they did say that they they understand that we have deer as an issue here in town.
I wish uh Mr. Friday had stuck around, cause I can answer one of his questions, I spent. Couple hours last weekend reading up on what other cities in the state do on this. Um, the most long running and well studied version appears to be Meridian Township just outside of East Landside. Uh, they started their deer hunting program in twenty eleven, there's obviously a lot more people down there, we need a township that's a bigger space. With larger plots of land, they had about forty people participate, and you took the dark car deer collisions. Around forty percent eleven years ago, down significant. I know that we have a problem and that waiting another year. May not be in the best interest. One of the concerns I have, and here's the question. What's our metric to decide next year or any future year? That, oh, mission accomplished, we don't have.
I think one of the things we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at that car deer accident over uh the next uh whether. From now, really, and so um. Through the winter and then through the spring and partly through the summer, I think that's gonna be one metric that we're gonna use, the sec- the second metric will be used. Well, again, drive that east side and see what kind of deer we're seeing, is it, is it, you know? Are they all over, are they laying in people's front yard in the middle of the day, things like that? Uh, and I think at that point, we'll get a good indication of, yeah, the population's down. Um, should be, like I mentioned earlier, fifteen to twenty deer, I don't think we'll ever get it down that low. Uh, I think if we can get it down to about, you know, forty, fifty deer uh per square mile, uh, you know, I think we might be doing well. Um, and then we may have to do other things, you may have to figure out other avenues to to take care of the population, but. I'm a, I'm I'm pretty confident if we take them down by, you know, fifty to a hundred deer, I think it'll make a huge difference.
Well, from what I can read, the other parts of the state where they're doing these things, it has not completely solved the problem, cause the deer reproduce. Much more rapidly than the hunters are moving. The DNR, um, from one of their guidance documents, though I can't quote the name of it off the top of my head, but they basically laid out all the options. And they started off with like, oh. Reach trees bolts, you know, and then you're trying to be funny, so you're like, that's not feasible here, right? And there are the, there's the sharpshooter option, which has costs and its own concerns. And ultimately, as the apex predator, the vibe I got from the deer was that their DNR is. They do think this is the solution that oftentimes has to be employed. But yeah, I guess, you know, my concern is. You know now, it's a problem. But in a few years, I think the metrics are kind of loose, and I, and if we improve this tonight, I wanna revisit. Really how we're knowing. It's an ongoing problem, but it's uh. How many years of deer car crash data do we have right now?
Two thousand twenty-three to correct.
And what does that tell us?
Twenty-seven percent.
Is that stable, is there an uptick?
I think there is a pretty good steady progression upwards.
I did find the statewide data is roughly twenty percent, um, but granted, not all the state is. A town where the seed swarms have been destroyed along the edges, and you're up against a lake in another spot, so it's. It's an apples to oranges comparison.
And this ordinance allows us to, does it? Every year I can look at it and come back, council and say, hey, look, looks different, I mean, and we could do.
I think if we decide to do this, we're gonna learn a lot of important data this fall. But then in the spring or summer, I think we will need to revisit a lot of metrics, cause I. I don't see one now, and I'd like to have one created before the following fall if we do this tonight.
One thing about it is, is that, you know, you're gonna know the amount of kill. Deer check. Down in the back of that, uh, you'll have your increase in the spring to fall. So it's gonna take a big number to get cut down. And I can't see with three and a half acre, and I agree with the three and a half acre aspect. But um, I can't see with a three and a half acre where we got that many people that own three and a half acres. And then on top of that. Uh, a lot of them probably aren't grown all the way. So we're gonna have a hard time really digging into the numbers. Um, I I I just, you know, just so that I know that. You might have twenty, maybe thirty hunters at the most. And if they all get at least one deer, next year, that's another sixty. That's uh, well, assuming they're all adults, okay, so that's kind of the. For anyhow, it's gonna take a significant number of kill uh.
I think at the, at the very worst, we're going to prevent the herd from getting larger.
I think it's gonna get larger and smaller breed.
Ken, is it possible, um, I don't know how much the hardship would be to have the police report reflect. Along with uh traffic accidents, deer related tra- uh, traffic accidents, and we can kind of see a trend. You know, that's up to him, but I think that would help us.
One more thing, I heard you said, somebody told me, or or for reference, the idea that. And we drive only twenty-five mile an hour in the city. Um, but my experience has been every year that I've had, which is three. I haven't hit them, they ran into me, and uh, when I was over on my way here tonight. Right, right along the river, and I was driving along, probably ten mile an hour. And a fawn came flashing home, another thing that you gotta understand is that our streets are narrow. So you, and if the guy dodged or anything on the side, uh, it's it's really a hard time to see him, but. But the thing here is, is that this uh fawn flashed on him, was turned and unparalleled with me. But he was about that far from my view. And then, and so it isn't the idea how slow you're driving or anything like that, because it's, we got a lot of different circumstances.
And I think we pretty much touched on everything at this point, if there's nothing else to, yeah, go ahead, go for it, for Craig.
Mr. Oxley and Mrs. Silver, they're correct, uh, one thing. The city has, there's not many people have three acres. They're all gonna be all towards Bay Area or on the outskirts of town where there's not a bunch of people. And houses together. So they're already hunting out there, like he said, but the. Three plus acres is gonna be on the outskirts of town. And it's not gonna be confined into these, you know, you're not, we're not gonna give a. Somebody who has three acres over by West Side, you know, we're the, oh, nothing but one acre lots around them. So it's only gonna be till that's where, I looked at the map and. That's where ninety-nine percent of the property is, is on the outskirts just on the city limits. It's nothing inside.
The three and a half acre. Three acres will be inside. Um, when you're shooting from the blind and you're shooting with a bolt, you're not gonna be shooting any further than that three acres. It like, it won't reach the border of the three acres, so that's uh something they referenced, a bullet going through their house or something like that. That's pretty much, I don't, something could happen. Uh, no, we can't even think of, but I don't wanna have to think of much, but. Um, for the most part, there is not gonna be this long distance shooting that causes a lot of trouble.
So I think we recognize there is a problem. With the illnesses that you were talking about that are on the horizon, there were areas. We wanna make sure that deer that are in our state are not. Having to experience that, go through that. From what Adam was talking about, the DNR has mentioned other things. But this seems like the one that is the most impactful. If we find that this doesn't work, or say tonight we don't pass this. What we're planning being, it seems like it's still clearly a problem, should we have like a alternate?
I think if we move forward with it. I think we're gonna learn a lot, we may have to look and say, hey, we need to take it down, that we need to start. Using some public property, can we work out something with the conservancy? Uh, to see if they'll allow some time, but I know on some other properties, they do allow hunting. You know, so there may be other options to get to more of the area of where the deer are at, so if we allow it. If we don't, I really don't have a solution without uh us allocating. And like you said, um, the sterilization, um, the, you know, some reload trapping and relocating. Sharpshooters, those are, you know, those are six figure propositions that I don't think we can entertain. So I think we would just have to say, look. You know, just gotta leave it as it is, and whatever happens, happens. I I don't think we can come up with a hundred grand to hire sharpshooter.
Yeah, and the city can't afford to cleanse off everybody's garlands with paper, everyone's repellent chemicals that are supposed to. Ward them off, interestingly enough, and and I'm not gonna quote the city, because I. Had a hard time understanding these sources, I would treat them, but one of Michigan's major cities. From my understanding, already allows hunting, because it's not forbidden. And they still had a problem, people are hunting on their private property where. They they did a whole study on it, mapped all the deer, made heat maps of where deer are. Discovered they had this huge problem, and they said, you know what, we need to hunt them in the parks. And the city said, no, we're not gonna do that, because people thought, said we don't want hunting in parks. And to be clear, there will be no hunting in the city of Chavilla Parks, right?
No hunting in parks.
None in the conservancy lands.
Uh, no, 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 they don't allow it.
Private property owned.
Correct.
Okay, anything else? All right, now, let's.
Did you want the date explicitly written in the?
Yes.
Where would you want, but how would you want?
Section one under purpose to begin designing and the answer. Uh, within the city of Chavilla, from October first to November thirtieth, under strict safety, property, wildlife management. Guidelines to ensure the protection of residents, property and natural resource. And then we'll have to add it to the forms and guideline things.
Should we uh amend for those dates? So as far as.
Yes.
Right, um, so I have a motion from. I will amend the motion, change the dates, well, to refer to November thirtieth.
Correct.
Hey, can I have your second originally from Mr. Ron, is that something you're okay with, okay? All right, so I have a motion from Martin, second by arms speed. Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Beverly?
Yes.
Orange B?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Okay, motion passed, we have eleven B, consideration of an ordinance to amend. Section one thirty point zero three of chapter one thirty of title thirteen, general offenses of code of the city of Chavilla. I will make that motion. I have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Brandon, to amend. Section one thirty point zero three of chapter one thirty of title thirteen, general offenses of the code of the city of Chavilla. Anyone have a question or comment?
I would like to go back to my comment through him, Al, it seemed like an honor, okay? I guess fine for people to not break it all, okay, I mean, the fines of putting trash in the yard, it means woods is five hundred, and they still trash. Is it, is this where the fine would?
Correct.
That's the next one, I see.
Oh, no, it's an accident, yes. I'm jumping with you.
Okay, and the resolution, that that makes no sense, okay. Okay, anything else from anyone?
No questions.
Yes.
Um, I stand here. Why are we doing this? Has something changed?
Because that is uh, is uh, Mr. Spolsky told you. When we passed that ordinance just now, then it put it into, it was, it was. Conflict in conflict with one of our other ordinances, which is this, and so we're fixing that. By, so they're not in conflict, so they are agreeing. So, am I hearing what I'm saying?
Uh, under C, you see this stuff in red, yours is in red, right?
Yes.
Okay, number one was there already. Number two, uh, we added, say, bows and crossbows, maybe described for the purpose of deer hunting and compliance with chapter one hundred. Of city code, archery, deer hunting, and all applicable state regulations. So we had to add that, because other than that, we were passing a law over here and said, yes, come out in the city, but. Then it was against the law to shoot a bow in the city. So we had to change that and say, it's okay to shoot a bow or a crossbow in the city. If you are using it for archery purposes according to chapter one hundred.
Roll call, please.
Brandon?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Martin?
Yes.
Orange B?
Yes.
Darling?
Yeah.
Then?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, I have eleven C, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two. Make a motion to the city convention twenty twenty-five, twenty-two.
With the modification of?
With the modification. I'm being raised three hundred. To as yet to be discovered. To as yet to be disturbed. Is that something we can do?
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Just being proactive instead of doing it twice.
Okay.
Okay, first question.
What if? I have a motion by uh, Councilman Martin, second by Councilman Dodd, uh, to through. A resolution establishing fees and violation penalties for the archery deer hunting program pursuant to ordinance, chapter one hundred.
So thank you. So without permit for either land or two hunts, um. If someone does shoot a deer during archery season in the city limits without the necessary permits, they would be considered a poacher under state law, right?
They would be in violation of our thing. Um, I can't speak on state law, so I would assume.
In theory, we're creating the ability to hunt. If we don't permit them to hunt, they're therefore poaching.
I don't know, Adam, I could check that, but I, I would, I would be leaning towards you, yes, it would also be a violation of state.
What is the punishment for poaching in Michigan?
Not sure.
Your license for. Uh, a few years.
And then you get fined.
Equipment, you can leave your truck. Anything that you have with you at that time.
It's a trophy.
Could be.
The fine is based to on.
Points. Point, how big it is.
Yeah, if it's a big giant buck, you'll get fined more than that. So. It's strict.
Then they pay. To, to the state reimbursing for that. So, yeah, we can answer that tonight. That's obviously up to the state and any given situation. But um, I think three hundred is also too low. The community has made it known they have concerns. But we're gonna allow this with all seriousness. To me, an appropriate fine, if you're not gonna follow the rules and we catch you hunting without this stuff, should be like a thousand dollars. I always think of twenty-five. So if I know. Not opposed to that, like, because. I'm sorry, a thousand dollars, I mean, some people have it, some people don't. But you really get to their pocket on that, especially if they all buy now. And uh, tie ball. Or anything, you know, if they shoot the buck, they'll all shoot in the bill. I mean. They gotta. If they're not gonna follow the law, or the rules that were set in place, then I think the fine needs to be. In their pockets, I mean, hard. I don't think it should be minimum.
I would also argue that they own this three acres, if not all, they could probably afford it. Just easily even about thirty.
Well, I'm not arguing about affordability is defined for.
It's to the sweep up for the law.
Yeah.
Simply a swage for me.
Yes. Cause if. If we set the rules and, you know. I think it needs to be a real. Uh, real high. Uh. The same price that you'd pay at the state, you know? And will there be a similar fraction?
Okay, so it won't change your listening or anything that week.
It's real good so much.
Any other comments?
So what, what did you guys discussing?
That was in there, twenty-five hundred. What is that amount?
I think twenty-five hundred and a thousand dollars. I mean, I know they did it in offense. But there are some people that deer hunt just to feed their families. And they don't have the money to go out. And actually buy food that they need for their table.
But if they break the law, if they break the law, the other way to get caught. Through the DNR, the penalty is a lot higher than twenty-five hundred dollars. So even if they can't feed their families or whatever, you know, or that's why they're doing it.
If they do it legally, they don't have to worry.
Yeah. It just.
That's, that's kind of the point.
I'm sorry, the white deer are beautiful, and, and, you know. Somebody goes and shoots one and only have to pay three hundred dollars. I'm sorry, that's a joke. To me, it's, it needs to be.
They're gonna let a woman do it just to it anyways.
It's just, it is, I mean, they're rare.
True, yeah. And I'm still kinda concerned about people not doing the tree line. It's just a level, not like if they get caught, let's say an arrow goes into a house. Yeah, then it's a safety. Same for safe fish.
But like you said.
Yeah, but once, once the chief and Dan with the property, they can fly right on down there and just sit there and stay in it.
Sometimes that's where you're hoping that, that people, you know, high end there, it's like always hold.
Yeah, I, I would be. For twenty-five hundred, because for potential safety issues.
And how much would it, the DNR charge, what is that price?
Well, we don't know for sure. We can't say, but what we're told is the state is much stricter than.
Except to five thousand for deer jail to have to nine days.
Cause it's illegal, it's, it's against the law.
And then you go with your common license, you include this, what you human, vehicle, alchemy and policy. For poaching one.
Best to buy headlock, and I don't know. You know, what the significance of the purple beer is or, or kind of how, how people feel about it, but, but it makes sense to. It's even higher for if someone were to shoot that. Doesn't that make sense? I guess.
Well, that was so long ago.
I don't even know what if high ball.
Yeah, I know.
White.
Oh, the white, she said white and high ball.
Mostly white, but it's got some brown with it.
One we have in town right now has got brown on the top part of the head. Mostly all white, but it's beautiful.
It is.
It's very exposed to, that, that makes it a high ball. High ball doesn't have the pink nose, the pink eyes. Uh, another white nose, pink nose, pink eye, it's all what. Uh, we've learned uh, to the point that it's closed on, not white, but clean for a lot.
Uh, punching is a privilege and carries great responsibilities to find a shooting.
All right, so I, I hit the motion from Councilman Martin originally. My, uh, I would assume. That you would need to put a, a number, a dollar number on that.
So I will amend the motion of the. Through the consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-two to a fine of changing it from three hundred to twenty-five hundred.
I will second that.
Okay. All right. I am. Roll call.
Martin. Brandon.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Doug. Yes. Arms speed.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Darling.
Okay, I have. Uh, motion passed eleven D, we have listing of public auction items to allow the. City staff to list the presented items online for public auction.
I make the motion of approving the public auction items listing.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilwoman Darling, to allow the city of Sheboygan staff to list the presented items online for public auction. Yeah. Yes, what?
Uh, are we gonna have a minimum?
Yeah, there is. Well.
Yes.
There is.
So anyone else have time on those?
Is that your truck?
It's uh.
The top hole, that's not your truck, yes?
No. Um, actually, I, I think Eric used to drive that one. Um, every year, so you know, we're going through, there was stuff behind. EPW and, and we, we buy new equipment, we're getting rid of old equipment, we're in the path. It just sat there, it rusted away to nothing, and then we usually end up selling it for scrap. So for the last about three years, we've been actively disposing of stuff. Uh, that we either don't need or we upgrade it and get rid of it while there's still some useful place to it and get some money back. So Eric does a real nice job of that.
Anything, any other comments?
What is the amendment?
We don't.
We don't, we don't, I'm sure it would be different for each item.
You can call. I don't know.
Thanks, roll call please.
Alex.
Yes.
Where?
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
Mallory.
Yes.
Doug. Yes.
Okay, motion passed eleven E, Eastern Avenue brush, the bowl will slightly update. What we have there.
All right. Uh, it's still closed, um, many people were aware, there was a lot of legal dumping going on, we had trash.
There, there's a lot of noise going on, the audience can, uh, it's very distracting and I having trouble saying if we can. Write it down a little bit, please.
Sorry, don't stop right here, please.
Yes, please. Okay, go ahead.
Um. Uh, there's a lot of legal dumping going on, trash, appliances. Uh, we had a lot of non-residents going out there. We had businesses, landscaping businesses taking all their. Uh, materials out to our dump, um, so we had to shut it down. Um, and we had a lot of things going on with FEMA, uh, we had people out there brung chipping, so. We've kind of been working on cleaning it up. I did, uh, use the chippers that we used over here. On Drack Street and the, and the, they chipped the stuff that was over here at the rec center. Um, we had them out at our dump. I was able to keep them around for another couple of days for about, I think it was about thirteen thousand dollars. And I had to chip up. A lot of stuff that was illegally dumped there, uh, that was obviously not trash, trash, we had to haul away. Uh, so we got it to a point where we're getting close to being ready to. Open it up again, um, but we're not gonna do it how we did it in the past, um, over the years, it used to be locked at night. And if some reason it's not locked, locked at night or the weekend, so we were inviting problems. Uh, so what we're gonna do, starting October fourth, and we'll put this out to the public, uh, we're gonna open up, uh. The, the, the brush site from October fourth to November twenty-second. Um, Wednesday nights, it'll be open from three to six, uh, Saturdays from ten to two. And there will be somebody there at the dump at all times. Okay, uh, we're gonna allow residents and residents only, no businesses. Um, no, no, you know, other, you know, non-residents, other people from the, the area. Be residents only, um, could go there, uh, they gotta produce a driver's license, um, it has to have a city address. If you have a P O box on your driver's license, uh, you're gonna need to be, bring a copy of your water bill or your taxes or sign lease or something. Proving to us that you are a resident of the city, um, and we will allow you to, uh, dump from now until the twenty-second. Um, between the twenty-second and November and, uh, probably in spring. I'm gonna come back to you with a proposal where we're gonna figure out how. Flat fee, uh, to all residents, uh, to dump out there. Um, and then also limit how many trips you can take out there, um, and I don't know what. That number's gonna be beyond that time to, you know, kind of flush that out. Uh, that money will be used, obviously, if I gotta take somebody to sit there for three to six and ten to two, you know. Twice a week, uh, for probably from, let's say. Beginning of April, probably, or mid-April, all the way until November. We gotta pay for that. Two, uh, every year I wanna bring back, um, somebody to chip. With one of the big semi-truck chippers and chip it up. In the past, what we've done is people pilot, we run a dozer, we push it back. Next year, people dump, we take a dozer, we push it back. That's creating a huge liability for us. Like now, if we wanna go back and chip all that, it may take us years to chip. Or I can't imagine how much money. One of those large tub grinders, I think was about a million bucks, and I don't think we have that sitting around anywhere. Um, so I'm trying to set up something that's sustainable. Most communities do not take brush and stuff anymore. Um, we wanna continue to provide that service, so there may be a minimal cost, uh, cost. Right now, if you do recycling in the county, anybody that lives in the county, uh, whether you know it or not, you're getting charged, I think, around twenty-five dollars on your taxes. To pay for that. Uh, so similar thing here, you, you're gonna have to pay a fee, you're gonna be able to come out there. Produce your driver's license, your card, say, okay, I live here, we'll record down if you came in with, you know, approximately X amount, you know, uh. Uh, cubic feet of brush, and then we're gonna keep track. Something like, we started noticing, Jesus, there's a person coming out there and there's, they live on a. Small, tiny little lot, and they're, they're coming out there every week with a thing of brush, and we'd have to say, hey, look, something ain't right. Yes, so we're, we're gonna do, but obviously no trash is gonna be taken, no appliances are gonna be taken. And then we also have people showing up with trees that are probably that much of diameter. And, you know, certain, I, I don't know, you know, obviously they have a piece of equipment or something, they roll it off their trailer or dump it out of the dump truck. And then we have trouble moving it. So stuff like that, we, we will reserve the right to deny taking whatever you bring out. So we're changing, um, just so. You, you, out there, we will also have, it, it's going to be. Uh, video monitor, um, during off hours. Uh, so we'll have a number of locations that'll catch people coming and going, uh, so if somebody decides they're gonna pull up, throw stuff over the fence. Uh, we'll have a nice clear shot of their license plate and, uh, they'll get a visit from one of the chief or one of his officers to introduce them to you. A nice file. Dave?
Is this in place of people going around and spraying the fall?
Good question. You always ask the good questions. Um, no, it will not replace that. We are still gonna be spraying fall cleanup. Okay?
When is the fall feeding?
Don't know that. We haven't said that yet because we're trying to. Get everything cleaned up out there. We're hoping that we'll get it cleaned up soon, uh, so that we can get the guys out there to start doing that. And I, right now I have all the guys, um, doing, uh, ditch work and work for FEMA. Uh, on, uh, you know, the watersheds and things like that right now, so they're, they're kind of busy on that, so. As soon as we know, we'll, we'll put it out there. I'll let you guys know when we put it out on Facebook. So what I just described to you, unless you guys have some big issue with it, I will send this out. On Facebook and any other media that we can. I believe I'll be. On the radio sometime this week, early next week, I'll announce then to, you know, a lot of grief. But I didn't have a choice. It was getting terrible. We actually had brushed out the gate and, and trash even, out the gate and onto Eastern. Um, and it, it was, it was terrible. He can just, and you're. I had staff saying, hey, I just followed somebody in, they just came in from outside of the town east, and they drove all the way there with a whole, you know. Long twenty-foot trailer full of stuff, and they were heading right for the brush then. So for a while there, we were taking care of probably a good bit of the county once they, they closed their brush sites too, so we put an end to it.
And so it was interesting how many county residents openly were hate you out of social media.
Yes.
Yeah, if I hire a tree service to take down a tree and they cut down in my yard, living in the city limits, they chip it and everything, that's not allowed anymore there?
I, I think they need, uh, they're charging you for it, so they should dispose of it where they, they have their own sites.
Cause that's a lot of questions we're gonna be asked.
And, and the person that'll be at that gate. They're gonna be well versed on what they can do, what they can't do. That's a good question.
Anything else?
So enough of that. We have all the management report guy.
No. I'm sorry. City manager.
All right, uh, parks and rec plan, uh, Nemco and city staff are really making great progress on our recreational plan. October second, we're having a meeting for public input from six till nine-thirty here in city hall. Uh, public's encouraged to come. We're gonna talk about our parks, uh, get some ideas on what people are looking for, what we need to improve, what we're doing right. Put that information into the plan. Um, Nemco is actually doing some assessments on our parks. I know they did one last week, Scott Hancock, Ashley Martha, uh, and Scott took them around, um, and we'll have. Some of our results from our survey that was done in conjunction with the master plan, so. We need to get this done, important, uh, because this is what we use to apply for grants from DNR and other agencies. Uh, court case regarding a fence over by Duncan Bay. Um, we were in a court case where they were appealing a order zone appeal decision. Um, that case was dismissed by Judge Goffier, um, the info, uh, the, uh, the person suing us. Uh, was not, did not provide all the necessary information, so that character pieces over with. Um, FEMA, Casey and I have been meeting with FEMA on a weekly basis, things are going pretty well. Casey's doing a fantastic job of gathering data, I think she's even really wowed FEMA and her abilities to put tables and information together at their request. Um, FEMA will be here next week for a site visit, um, so we'll be taking them around, I believe it's one o'clock on two there, two o'clock I think. Um, concession stand, as I mentioned before, it's ninety-nine percent done, we have some punch list items to get done. I'm awaiting the final inspections and closeouts, uh, once we receive those, then we can do the final payouts and draw down the grants. Um, little, uh, lease for Little League as we developed concession stand, um, and I've been here for four and a half years. And, uh, there's a lot of conflict of who's responsible for what over there. Uh, so in order to solve that and also to make sure our insurance companies happy, I did send a lease to the Little League, uh, that I wrote. Um, this will allow us to understand who does what, who buys the supplies, who cleans the restrooms, who locks them, you know, and, and things like that. Also, um, you have not only the Little League, but you have other, like, agencies that, like, they use our fields, and then I'll be entering into leases with them. But the first right of refusal for those diamonds of has been and will be, uh, the Little League, so they will kind of coordinate things for us. Um, they've taken my lease and sent it to the board for review and comments. Uh, master plan and zoning updates, um, Friday, I, I, I decided I was going to stay at home and try to read the nine chapters of the master plan, which I succeeded in. Um, I think, uh, my edits, uh, are formatted to Nemco, uh, to be, uh, changed, modified. Um, and then, uh, the final draft will be given back to, uh, the committee that's working on that. Uh, did do, we did complete the first draft of the land use map, the current land use map. Um, we also have a draft of the new zoning map, um, that has been altered so that it matches the new zoning code that we're working on in the new districts. Uh, that was, I had to go parcel by parcel to identify not only what it is now, or what it could be, and then also what that, that took a lot of time, uh, I mean, it took days on some of those maps just to go through every parcel of the city. Um, I think it, they, you'll be surprised, there are more three acres than you, uh, parcel than you've realized. Um, we are making good progress on these documents, and we still give the toppings to Mishda, and remember, we got a fifty thousand dollar grant to pay for these. Uh, we also got a grant from, I believe it was Mishda to, uh, pay for the, uh, rec plan too. So we're getting the three major documents that the city has, we're getting all three of them updated, uh, most of them have not been updated in probably ten plus years. Um, they're supposed to be updated like every five years, uh, so this is huge, this is huge undertaking, these are the documents you guys use as council. I use and my staff uses to guide the city, uh, into the future, and so we were using outdated documents, uh, so we're gonna get that cleaned up. Alex worked with N L E A, then Rybo Marine, and we're applying for a grant to assist Rybo with an expansion project. Uh, the cost of the project is about three point four million dollars, uh, Ohio's gonna contribute about, uh, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars towards that. Uh, so we're asking for about two point five million dollar grant. Um, they're gonna restore the steam wall down there along the property, it's fairly lengthy there and it's in, it's in Roxay. Uh, and this will allow them to bring bulk cargo into their facility. Uh, fireworks ordinance, there have been a lot of, like, I'm gonna make a joke, we've been a lot of fireworks on the internet. Um, and, uh, we already have the ordinance done, um, we also have, Alyssa is getting that public notice out, so I think we'll be able to act at the next meeting to pass an ordinance to give the chief and his officer a little more teeth to deal with our issue that we've been having over the last couple of weeks. We are looking at hiring a code enforcement officer, we got resumes in and stuff. I've talked to a few members of county, I haven't got to all you yet, um, but I think instead of hiring a code enforcement officer, we're gonna hire a community development director who's gonna work with our, our current assessor and Alex, uh, to, uh, do code enforcement as a team. Uh, that would involve not only blight, not only zoning, uh, but also any of the other ordinances that we may have, uh, such as the property maintenance code and things along that line. Uh, with the three of them, uh, they should be able to, uh, do a fantastic job of keeping track and really driving that forward. Um, and I think we'll get a whole different level of expertise, uh, to help me out with some planning and zoning type things. And also I'll be able to concentrate on some of the larger issues we have coming up, such as the paper plant, uh, and some other things in town. And, uh, one of those other things is the opera house here, uh, we're gonna have to start getting moving on that, uh, we do have a number of studies done. And also with the community development, we'll be able to chase money to, uh, coordinate with the arts council to get some improvements made to this building. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. City sir. Give me two. Okay, now open public comment, it's, you know, any public comments, please stand, it's figure eight. We'll have three bills.
Uh, Owen Goslin, the director of the Chavoyian Area Arts Council, which manages the opera house. Um, it's nice to take a break from deer for a moment, and the city manager mentioned the arts council, which is a nice segue. Um, I'm here because, uh, two years ago, some of you were on council, you know that we applied for, as the arts council, uh, a grant from the Consumers Energy Foundation, and we're awarded, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for its accessibility improvements to the building. Uh, it was a competitive grant and, uh, it was a great honor for this building to be recognized for its, um, importance. Uh, it's been two years, we're still trying to get clarity on the process for how we can go about making improvements, um, in the past, according to the records that I can see, uh, Catholics with the opera house were a bit out through the city. Uh, so we need to partner with the city to find a process that works. If these projects are gonna be set up by the city, we need the city to do that, or if, if not, if we are, as the arts council, managing the project, we been looking for bids and, and, this is for the projects, but either way, we need some clarity so we can move forward with it. Uh, just to be clear, this is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is not matched, it's, um, money which is designated for accessibility improvements to the opera house. Can be used for other projects, but of course there are many needs with accessibility that we all know about. Uh, you probably know, we're pretty busy, we serve about, uh, we have about over twenty thousand visitors currently a year that come to the opera house. It's probably make a lot of noise, give you on certain days. Uh, and so accessibility is a huge thing that we're concerned about, making it much more, uh, easy for people to access. Uh, separately, we also have, uh, some private donations which were, um, uh, given to us to make some improvements to the theater stage space. This is another project, uh, we did a study last year to look at our rigging in our, our theater space and look at safety issues there. And a number of deficiencies, uh, were discovered, and so we've been making, uh, corrections to that, going down the list of what was discovered. In January, we, uh, spent approximately twenty thousand dollars to make repairs to the rigging above the theater stage. But our next, um, phase of, of improvements that we'd like to do would be to replace the curtains, which are no longer flan group with curtains that are, uh, and so we have a private donation that would allow us to do that. Again, when I look back at the records, last time we had replaced the curtains, the city did that out. Uh, we are asking for clarity about whether we wanna follow that same process, and if so, then we need to partner, work together on that. Uh, or if you'd like us to proceed with finding a company and doing that, we can do that. Uh, but there are many, many projects, um, obviously it's really important for us to, um, make improvements to show that we can apply for foundation grants and follow through and make improvements because success begets success. And so, um, there are grants out there for improvements, and if we can demonstrate a good track record, then we can try to more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jessica Schleih. I'm a resident of the city and I'm also the president of the arts council, and it's, I've been meaning to get here and not me, but see all of you, and I wanna thank you for your time and consideration. I'm really here to support Owen, and second, what he said, um, we received a very generous grant donation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for accessibility improvements, and it's got very specific conditions and very specific things that we said we would do with that money when we applied that was granted. I understand there is a large scope of projects that need to be done on this building, large and small. The reality is the large projects don't stop the small projects from needing to be addressed, and we have money right now to address some of these small projects. Um, we've been for some time now seeking clarity on this process with the city. We have not been given much direction up until this point. We wanna maintain full compliance with the city's requirements, but we respectfully request a meeting with our city manager and any other interested members of the council to solidify a process that we can rely to finally begin these projects and upgrades to our facility. I understand they may not be the most pressing or the ones that the council or our city manager may most want to address, but they are the projects we have funds for that we could fix now. Um, unfortunately, we are in window until we can get a formal process in place, whether that's us looking for bids or the city looking for bids. We wanna be collaborative, we wanna be cooperative, we absolutely do not want to return grant funds that we've earned endowed, although we're approaching the point where we'll have to consider doing so if we can't get some clarity on the process. Um, and we look forward and appreciate, um, working with our city manager and the council to move forward with these projects. And thank you, and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well, we passed another ordinance. We've put it on for a few weeks, but it let the other people come and have a separate meeting. Done, told her the only thing you need to do now to find some more money for the city, please get by friends in order to enforce a lot of these ordinance. We had them, but do we get any more money for a while? Don't know, don't know where you can get it. You gotta fund it, that you gotta go buy it, but you keep giving them more work to do. But hopefully you can look forward into that and try and help them out. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, appreciate the opportunity, just to introduce myself, uh, my name is Jeremy Wood, I'm the local wildlife biologist for Department of Natural Resources here, I cover anthromes, Chavoygan, Charlevoix, Emmett and Onsego counties. Um, it's interesting to hear the discussion here today, I've been in that position for just about a couple of years now. Uh, it's the first I've heard of, you know, issues you're having here in Chavoygan. Uh, so just wanted to come, understand a little bit of background and history, hear the comments from, from folks in town. Uh, you know, managing deer in urban, urban settings is always a challenge, each city municipality is unique in how they choose to handle these situations, and just wanted to let you know that I'm here as a resource, you know, as you go forward, I suspect you know, you'll continue to have things develop with this, if you look to implement this ordinance and, and see how the first year goes. Uh, so just wanted to, if it's alright, I can pass, you know, some, some success cards out to the folk.
Okay, do you wanna stand up an hour ago?
Well, if I, uh, obviously, city council, you have, uh, the authority to, you know, make the regulations that you do, I apologize for that. Um, but you have the, you know, authority to make regulations within your jurisdictions, uh, there are, you know, state laws, obviously, but city law can supersede on some of them, or at least go beyond what that state law is. And, you know, we're not here to, you know, force anything upon any municipality, it's, you know, kind of up to you to to make a determination of what makes sense for, for you all within your communities, uh, like I said, just, just here as a, a resource if, if you need it in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Bowles, uh, in the Mission Avenue, uh, as a transit user. I'm really, uh, displeased with the, uh, winter hours for the, uh, um, this facility here, uh, last comes in at nine oh five P M going northbound. And, uh, you are leaving, uh, people, um, potentially one to two hours uh, without the access to restroom facilities. So, um, you need to keep this building open until the, that bus, uh, that last bus comes in and goes. That this is a transit facility, uh, for Indian Trails Bus Line. So, uh, we need to, uh, keep this building open until that, uh, bus leaves. Uh, you know, it could be delayed, so it really should not be a set time until that bus, you know, the, the PD knows when that bus comes in and goes out, you know. Uh, they have dealers on those buses, so, you know, they can, uh, easily, uh, tell when that bus comes in and goes, so they can get, uh, uh, you know, city staff to close this building up. So like I said, it's for accessibility of the building, this is a public building. I do understand that you guys do have some issues with some of the, uh, uh, population in, in the, in the town, uh, having some issues with the, uh, facilities. But, you know, this is still a transit facility, and you guys should have it open for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I stand up when my knee hurts, uh, I live on Lafayette Avenue, and the problem I have is when you start south on, on, uh, Lafayette Avenue, it goes, starts out at twenty-five miles an hour, all of a sudden it goes to thirty-five miles an hour. That area where the open field is right there is where the deer's been getting killed. There's also, just until recently, there was, uh, fat tails raced down there, they finally cut them all down, which looks great. I'd like to see if it's possible to get the speed limit dropped down to twenty-five, cause a lot of people that walk on that road jog down the road, all that, I think it would be safer if it was dropped to twenty-five because very short time, that area right there, you have to make right where you're gonna head to the bridge, and to go thirty-five, that's too fast. I just appreciate if there's something you can do, drop it down to twenty-five. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. Three acre parcels, how many do we have in the city of Chavoygan? Anybody know? Very soon. Is there, I mean, in the areas where we wanna kill deer? You, are you gonna have ten, or are you gonna have three hundred? This is something you should have thought about before you brought this out. Uh, you know, a little due diligence. I, I've got more than three acres, but you're not going near that, and it's in a prime spot, but nobody else around me has three acre. There isn't three acres and doesn't have a host right next to it, or a school. I think it's not very smart to not, uh, do your diligence before you came in and decided to do this. You know, we're gonna do it on three acre, three acre parcels. How many do we have? Well, I don't know. You'd think somebody would have thought of that, and at least, uh, here's one over here we could use, here's one over here. And we only have five, how many deer are we gonna kill on five parcels? Something, maybe somebody should have thought about, thank you.
I did check, uh, you can Google that and you will get your answer.
I, I did go on, I was mapping, and the areas that I drove the other day where we covered a hundred and thirty-four deer, there is two on eastern on the north side of eastern that are eligible, there's four on Harrison Avenue, and then there's two on, uh, Butler Road.
Do people want you to shoot the deer out of their yards?
Yeah, wants to get into a question and answer.
So, yeah, I have the, uh, property right next to the soccer fields to the, uh, fairgrounds, that nice woods right there. And I better not see anybody back in there, cause my kids play back in there, you know, and people, I know when you do a deer hunt like this, people get back in there. people get back in there, they get all fired up, they wanna shoot deer. You know, and if it does happen, it's gonna be on the city. You know, so just saying. This is never, we've never killed deer in the city before. I don't think it's a good idea, but personally, just cause I've lived here all my life, that doesn't matter. Thank you.
Now close public comments. Do you have any committee updates?